Good evening, everyone. It's Wednesday, November 8th, 2023. This is the Madeira Beach Commission Chambers, and this is our BOC meeting. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Mayor Rostak.
Present.
Vice Mayor Kerr.
Here.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Here.
Commissioner McGinn.
Here.
And Commissioner Brooks is absent.
City Attorney, will you do the invocation and the pledge of allegiance?
Yes, ma'am. Our heavenly Father, we seek blessings on the tasks before us. Bless our efforts with clear insight, our deliberations with wisdom, our work with clarity and accuracy, and our decisions with impartiality. We pray that our work this evening will find favor in your sight. This we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
First up is item four, approval of the agenda. Do we have anything there, commissioners?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Mayor Rostak.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, I see we have no proclamations. I see we have no presentations. Public comment. If anyone would like to come up now and speak on anything that's not on the agenda, please come up now. We'd love to hear from you. I know we have some students here that want to speak. Did you want to wait until the item agenda came up? Okay, all right. Is there any other public comment from anyone in the room? All right, public comment is closed then. All right, next up is the consent agenda, and we have items A, B, and C there, commissioners.
I don't see any problem. I'd like to approve the consent agenda.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Mayor Rostak.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up then is public hearings. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go ahead and read item number A, Ordinance 2023-07. This is a whistleblower ordinance. I'm going to read that by title only. Ordinance 2023-07, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida by creating Articles One general provisions and Article and Two whistleblower provisions of Chapter 50 personnel of the Code of Ordinances to provide for general employment matters, including a process for investigating employee complaints against the city manager, and to establish an administrative procedure for employees and other persons to report instances of illegality, mismanagement, malfeasance, waste or fraud on the part of city employees, agents, or contractors, providing a procedure for investigating such allegations, providing for non-retaliation for persons who report such instances, providing a manner for alleging retaliation to seek redress, making related findings, and providing for severability, codification, and an effective date. That was the second and final reading of Ordinance 2023-07 by title only. This was first read on October 11th, 2023. There have been no changes since the original reading.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on this before we go to a vote? Okay, public comments closed on that issue. Commissioners?
No changes.
Do we have a motion?
I move that we pass Ordinance 2023-07 whistleblower. I second that.
Thank you. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr.
Yes.
Mayor Rostak.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much. Next up is item nine, Bravo B, Ordinance 2023-34.
Thank you, Mayor. This is Ordinance 2023-34, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, providing for ballot title, ballot question, and text for proposed referendum question to be placed on the March 19th, 2024 election ballot, providing for amendment to the charter, changing the qualifying period to the first full week in December instead of the first two full weeks in December, providing for the election date, providing for coordination with the Pinellas County Supervisor elections, providing for repeal of ordinances in conflict, and providing for an effective date thereof. That was the reading of Ordinance 2023-34 by title only. I'm not sure if the city clerk has any background on that that she wants to give, but this was fully discussed at the workshop meeting last month.
Yes, it was. City Clerk, do you have any input?
I have here for questions. I can answer any questions you have. Our qualifying period is the first two weeks in December, and this is a recommendation, a request, to change it to the first full week in December and take advantage of the Florida statute that allows candidates to submit their qualifying papers no sooner than 14 days in advance of the election. Of course, that can happen anytime, you know, you could do that anytime.
All right, thank you. Is there any public comment on this item? All right, public comment on this item is closed. Commissioners?
Nothing's changed since our discussion at the Board of Commissioners. The paperwork is still available in a few days, actually.
Yes, I'm almost finished with the online packet. I've got all the...
And the signature sheets, everything?
Yeah, all the attachments in it and everything.
Just wanted to confirm that.
Yes, sir.
All right, well, thank you. Do we have a motion?
Well, I just wanted to bring out, so it's my understanding that you have an application that you can submit, that'll be online, that you can submit well before the qualifying period, and that would allow you to collect your signatures well before the qualifying period. So we're not limiting any potential candidate by limiting the qualifying period to one week. The one week is basically when you can stamp in their signatures or any other documents that are part of the packet, other than the actual application that states that you're intending to run.
You're referring to the Form DSTE 9, which says the appointment of campaign treasure and designation of campaign depository for candidates?
Yes.
That document has to be filed before any signatures gets on petition?
That's what I'm saying, but that would be well before the qualifying period. I'm going to make sure that everyone that's listening, that any potential candidates understand that we're not... This referendum, A, does not apply to this upcoming election period. It would be going on to a referendum to be voted on whether the citizens or the residents wanted to vote it in, but if it's approved, it's still not going to limit a candidate's time to collect their signatures and do all the things that they need to do. It's just the time period that they can submit it and have it stamped in by your office. Is that correct?
Correct. I can't stamp it in until the qualifying period starts, but you can submit it within the 14 days before.
Okay. I just want to...
And I sent everything over to the city attorney and everything and provided the Florida statutes and all, and so this is the information that you have in your packet.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner McGinn, you have any questions? Do we have a motion then?
I move we pass Ordinance 2023-34, amendment to the city charter, nomination of board commissioners, changing the qualifying period to the first full week in December instead of the first two full weeks in December.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Mayor Rostak.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero.
Thank you very much. Next up is item nine, C, Charlie, Ordinance 2023-35.
Mayor Commissioners, this is Ordinance 2023-35, an ordinance of the City of Madeira Beach, Florida, creating Article Six, Restrictions Relating to Smoking in or On Public Beaches and Public Parks of Chapter 58 of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Madeira Beach, to establish restrictions relating to smoking in or on public beaches and public parks, providing for purpose and definitions, providing for the prohibition of smoking in or on public beaches and public parks, providing for exceptions, providing for posting of non-smoking signs, providing for penalties, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date hereof. That was the first reading of Ordinance 2023-35 by title only. I'm not sure if the city manager has anything that he wants to add on this.
As we discussed in the workshop before, again, to mirror some of our neighbors and just continue to promote a cleaner, more beautifully maintained city, and certainly improve the health of people visiting our parks and our beaches, and I believe we do have, once we get to the public, some speakers for the item. Thank you.
How about if we allow public comment at this time? Are we okay with that? All right. Please come up. We'd love to hear what you have to say. Try to limit your comments to five minutes. And thank you for coming.
Oh, I think I'm too short.
Nope, you're good.
Oh, okay, I got it. Hello, everyone. My name is Jaden Taylor, and I'm a member of SWAT, which is Students Working Against Tobacco. I'm also on the youth advocacy board, which represents SWAT on a statewide level, and I think we should go vape and smoke-free for parks and beaches because my friends and I go to the beach and see cigarette butts littered everywhere, and it's a problem for... Because when we go to walk to the water, we have a face full of smoke, and you know how that kind of ruins your mood? So you're just like, oh, well, I kind of got the energy sucked out of me now, and not only does the smoke affect the person who's smoking, it affects everyone around the environment. So it affects dogs, cats, babies, anyone who's in the vicinity, and it's a problem because when you want to enjoy the beach, you can't really enjoy it if you're having something limit your fun time. And smoke-free for parks and beaches because we want to keep the environment clean, not only for us, who's living on the earth now, but for our future generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Isabel Nelson, and I go to Gibbs High School. I'm in my freshman year and in the PCCA chorus program. I'm with Students Working Against Tobacco. Every day I see kids my age and older people smoking and vaping. It can be in any place. Me personally, I go to the beach with my family often, and I'm sure you do, too. People smoking in places like the beach can also be a place where families are. Smoking happens in places like parks and beaches, but we, as a community, it's our job to notice, help, and protect the people we love and the people around us. I, for one, I love birds. I have a pet bird, and I love him very much. Tobacco waste affects birds of all kinds, and even birds like him. I consider my bird family, and I want to protect him. Smoking hurts that part of my family, but we can stop it. Thank you for protecting families and our wildlife at our beaches and parks.
Thank you for coming. Great job.
Hello, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name is Arwin. I'm in ninth grade and go to Hollins High School, working with Students Working Against Tobacco, also known as SWAT. I personally want to study with environmental science in college, which is made up of atmospheric sciences, ecology, environmental chemistry, geosciences, and social sciences, which is why this is very important to me and its cause because this affects the environment and affects us humans, our animals, plants, soils, and air with smoking, vaping, and all that stuff. And there are at least 7,000 chemicals that leak out of cigarette butts into our waterways from tobacco waste, and while our environment is being hurt, so is our school and home life. For me at Hollins High School, they've made it a normalized thing for vapes to be used, even in classes, without teachers looking, on the buses, in our bathrooms. If you try and go to the bathroom, it's just cloud of vape smoke in your face where you have to get through a whole cloud of girls or something, which is not very enjoyable. So this can also be pressurized onto kids, too. So they take this to public places, parks, beaches, everywhere that we go. So now it's been normalized for both kids and adults to be doing these things, which can affect our, like, environment, beaches, parks, and there's no smoking signs, but have you ever seen a no vaping sign? I don't think I have personally. So thank you for your leadership in protecting our community, keeping it safe for families, beaches, and parks. Thank you.
Thank you. Very well said. Is there any other public comment on this? Please come up, sir.
Hi, I'm Brian Green. I live across the street. I was just going to make sure that vaping is part of smoking. Is it? Yes.
Thank you. Any other comments? All right, we'll close public comment on this.
I want to applaud and congratulate you young people for becoming involved in local politics, standing up for something that you think is important. What you just did is hard. I wish more adults would have the courage to come up and speak their mind in a polite and civilized manner about things that are important to them. So thank you very much for coming forward and having the courage to do that today. We really appreciate it. That's all I had to say.
Vice Mayor?
I mean, it's an age-old argument about your rights, your free rights, and being out in an open environment on the beach or in the park or on the street or whatever, about smoking, it's your health, your body, your whatever, but as a city, I think that right has been overridden by the harm that it's done to our community. The trash pirates will tell you that cigarette butts are their primary problem, that they're continually picking up on the beaches and on the streets and in the gutters and everywhere, and I think that we need to stand with our other beach communities and ban the smoking and vaping where we can by law, and I think that's a great move. I support it.
Commissioner McGinn?
Great job, first of all, each one of you, and appreciate it very much that you came out tonight. Really meant a lot, okay? I was pretty much thinking about this topic, and back when I was in college, you know, just, you know, recently, we volunteered to go to Madeira Beach. I've lived here in Madeira Beach since 2005, and we volunteered two days to go to Madeira Beach and pick up trash, water bottles, cigarette butts, beer cans, you name it. Well, cigarette butts alone in two days was close to 500 cigarette butts, and just looking at that issue right there, that's just in two days. So I'm all for cleaning up our beaches and keeping them healthy. Thank you very much.
And Mayor, if I may...
Please.
Just wanted to thank, because she's here sitting next to our wonderful youth, Alex Winston, Florida Department of Health. She's the Tobacco Prevention Policy Coordinator. Thank you, Alex, for attending and for holding the meeting with Councilmember Taglerini and myself, but also she has provided us some drafts of signage that we will put up that the Florida Department of Health will be providing to us to help with the advocating, educating, informing, and encouraging people and advising them, hey, this is now an ordinance here in our city, and please properly dispose of your cigarette butt or vape if that's what our deputies happen to observe somebody do that. And we will go through probably at least 90 days of that, informing, advocating, educating, before actual real enforcement and writing a citation, which hopefully we won't have to.
Oh, absolutely. There'll have to be a learning curve. Well, do we have a motion?
I move we pass Ordinance 2023-35, smoking restrictions in public parks and public beaches.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr.
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn.
Yes.
Mayor Rostak.
Yes.
The motion carries four to zero.
Okay. Next item up, nine Delta. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding. I'm just going to go through the process that we normally go through with regard to alcoholic beverage licenses, and so if you can just bear with me for a few minutes, there is a specific number of things that I need to cover. So first of all, the applicant in the case is Mark Brown and Tiki Docs Madeira LLC. The address is 15015 Madeira Way, Suite 100 here in Madeira Beach. A summary of the application is pursuant to the Land Development Code, Article Six, Division Six, Alcoholic Beverages, the applicant for ABP 2023-07 is requesting authorization from the Board of Commissioners for the approval of a special food service establishment for COP SFS alcoholic beverage license with stated intent to sell beer, wine, and liquor for consumption on the premises at Don the Beach Comer, located at 15015 Madeira Way, Suite 100, Madeira Beach, Florida. This establishment is located in the PD Plan Development Zoning District. The Madeira Beach future land use designation for this property is planned redevelopment mixed use. The standards to be applied to the review of this application are set forth in Section 110-532. I just want to read those very quickly. Section 110-532, consideration of alcoholic beverage application. When considering the alcoholic beverage application, the Board of Commissioners shall consider the following factors. Number one, the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. Number two, the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Item three, whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed. Number four, whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety. And lastly, no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant is paid in full. Any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. City staff will be going over those findings in a moment. The burden of proof that you must apply in this case is, and I'm going to read it to you from Section 2-10 of our code, "The applicant shall have the burden of proof at the hearing to show by the greater weight of evidence that the application is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and complies with all procedural requirements of law. Conditions may be suggested by the applicant, the city, or any party, or may be imposed by the board, which are intended to assure consistency and compliance." I've already mentioned the identity of the parties, Mark Brown and Tiki Docs Madeira LLC and the city. There are no affected property owners that have filed notices of intent to become affected property owners. The presentation order is the applicant must present his application first, and then the city can make its presentation. Since there are no affected parties, Mayor, we can reverse that if that is the direction of the commission and have the city present first and then the applicant. I'm going to go ahead and read the quasi-judicial procedures. This is a quasi-judicial proceeding where the Board of Commissioners acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At a quasi-judicial hearing, it's not the board's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In this quasi-judicial hearing, the board is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented at the hearing and apply those findings of fact to prudently establish criteria contained in the Code of Ordinances in order to make a legal decision regarding the application before it. The board may only consider evidence at this hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates the applicant has met the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances and the board is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence at the hearing demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria established in the Code of Ordinances, the board is required by law to find against the applicant. At this point, I need to ask each of the commissioners whether or not they need to reveal any ex parte communications that they've had with the applicant or others about this particular application.
No.
Okay, thank you. I see everybody shaking their head no. All right. Do any of the commissioners have any conflicts of interest that they need to disclose?
No, none.
Okay, I'm seeing forehead shake no. So at this point, Mayor, I need to go ahead and swear in the witnesses. Anyone that's going to speak at this particular hearing, if you could please stand up, raise your right hand, I'm going to swear you under oath. You swear that the testimony you're about to give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth? Okay, thank you. So is the applicant ready to make a presentation, or would you prefer that the city go ahead and make that presentation first?
Okay, Mayor, is that okay with the commission then? Yes? I don't see that being a problem, Commissioners.
Okay. All right, so maybe we can have staff present. I'm not sure if it's Andrew or Marcy that's going to present tonight? Andrew is. All right, Andrew, if you just state your name then and go ahead with your presentation.
My name's Andrew Morris. I'm the long-range planner in the Community Development Department.
Can you pull the mic closer?
Sorry.
Yeah. Here we go. Thank you.
This is a public hearing for a special food service establishment for COP SFS alcoholic beverage license application, 2023-07, for requesting authorization from the Board of Commissioners for the approval of a special food service establishment for COP SFS alcoholic beverage license with stated intent to sell beer, wine, and liquor for consumption on premises at Don the Beach Comer, located at 15015 Madeira Way, Suite 100, Madeira Beach, Florida. Pursuant... When considering the alcoholic beverage license application, the Board of Commissioners shall consider the following factors. The first one is the extent to which the location and the extent to which the proposed alcoholic beverage request will adversely affect the character of this existing neighborhood. The property has the future land use designation of planned[1759.33] use designation of planned redevelopment mixed use and is surrounded by other properties with this future land use designation. The planned redevelopment mixed use, future land use designation is given to properties located within the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan. This property is located in the Commercial Core District of the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan. Commercial and commercial mixed use are the focus of this district. There are other nearby businesses that sell alcohol also. A restaurant that serves beer, wine, and liquor would be an acceptable use for the property and would not adversely affect the character of the existing neighborhood. The next criteria is the extent to which traffic generated as a result of the location of the proposed alcoholic beverage request will create congestion or present a safety hazard. Properties located within the Madeira Beach Town Center Special Area Plan have a reduced parking requirement that is 50% less than other areas in Madeira Beach. The restaurant is attached to a hotel structure that has a parking garage. The property has sufficient parking for both the hotel and restaurant uses. Traffic generated from the proposed alcohol beverage request would not create congestion or present a safety hazard. The next criteria is whether or not the proposed use is compatible with the particular location for which it is proposed. Establishment is not within 300 feet of a church, synagogue, temple, or place of religious worship. Public or private school operate for instruction of minors or youth recreation community center. A restaurant that serves beer, wine, and liquor would be compatible with existing zone designation and future land use designation for the property. Property adjacent to other similar commercial uses, the proposed alcohol use would be compatible with this location. Whether or not the proposed use will adversely affect the public safety, the requested license is not anticipated to adversely affect public safety for special food service establishment for COP SFS alcohol beverage licenses. The state of Florida requires at least 51% of gross food and beverage revenue to come from the sale of food and non-alcoholic beverages. Selling food will be the primary focus of the business, and selling alcohol would be secondary to that. The subject site is along a commercial corridor that includes other commercial uses that are compatible with an establishment that serves alcoholic beverages. The last set of criteria is the, no application for review under this section shall be considered until the applicant has paid in full any outstanding charges, fees, interest, fines, or penalties owed by the applicant to the city under any section of the code. Applicant has no outstanding fines, penalties owed to the city under any section of the code. Staff recommends approval of ABP 2023-07. Attached to the staff memo is the application and the public notice mailing and posting, and it has the mailing and posting affidavits to show it was done within the required time span of 15 days.
Thank you, Andrew. You wanted to tender into evidence the agenda packet from page 78 through 111, which is the entire agenda item. Are you asking that the Board of Commissioners received that into evidence?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Okay, so Mayor, at this point, you need to receive that into evidence. You don't have any objection, do you? The application being receiv-- okay. All right. So any questions from the Commission of Mr. Morris before he gets to be cross-examined by the applicant?
I have one. I'm sorry. The hours of operation, is that, does that fit the city code currently for that location? 11:00 PM is my concern.
I could double check this. I mean, it's a commercial zone property, and it's not near anything residential. 11:00 PM seems reasonable.
It seems reasonable. I'm just wondering, is there any restriction from any other commercial establishment, retail, similar location down on Madeira Way that is restricted to shorter hours, or does that fit the guidelines set by the city?
I'm trying to think of any, if there's any. It's been a while since, it's been like a year or so since we've had one get approved on Madeira Way, so I was just trying to remember, but I can't, I can't think of, the only restrictions I really can, are usually noise-related, but I can't think of anything related to 11:00 PM in that area. So, no, every time they propose is fine.
Can it be amended to state or as per existing ordinance, zoning ordinance? I don't know. I'm just wondering, is it 10:00 or is it 12:00? What is it, what is it currently in that section? I don't want to--
I don't believe, we have a time.
We don't have a time. It's just--
It's just the issue with regard to noise, controlling the noise, but as to when they're open and when they're closed, we can ask the applicant a little bit more information on that, but I assume that they're going, they have the opportunity as a restaurant to stay open to 2:00 or 3:00 AM to sell alcoholic beverages. They're closing at 11:00 PM, so obviously earlier than that. But the county would allow up to, I think, 3:00 AM to sell alcoholic beverages.
So this is a county thing, not a city?
No, this is a city application.
But I mean, as far as--
But I'm saying--
Business hours.
For the business hours, there is a provision in the county code relative to the sale of alcoholic beverages in the time. And we have a similar provision in our code as to the time relative to when they have to close. But as for it being a restaurant, I don't believe we have any requirement that a restaurant has to close at a specific time.
Strictly the noise.
Yeah.
Okay.
I've got a question then. How much of the restaurant activity is going to be outside? Is there outside seating? The schematics that we have here are so small, they're in like a two-point font, and they're useless to try to decipher.
Yeah. So the witness, Mr. Morris, may be able to answer that question. I'm not a fact witness, so I would rely upon him or the applicant to give you that additional information.
I apologize about the printing compressed it. If you look at it digitally, the PDF should be the full-size PDF attached. There is outdoor seating under a patio. Let me just go to the, pull up the page real fast.
Is that on the street side of Madeira Way, or is that on the water side?
Street side.
Okay.
Let me just--
I believe that it's at the intersection of 150th and Madeira Way.
Can I just get to it real fast? There we go.
I mean, if this is Madeira Way--
If you go, if you go to page--
It's the page immediately in front of the public notice memorandum.
Yes, so page 89. So 89 shows detailed of the seating. So there is a patio that would be fronting Madeira Way that is shown on the plans, on the floor plan. And yeah, it's like digitally, it's easier to tell, and you can zoom in because it's a pretty, but printing it out, because it wasn't originally the, like, this size paper. But yeah, thank you, Marcy, for zooming in. Yeah, now you can see it better. Yeah, outdoor seating right here.
So I have two questions related to both of those questions. Is the outdoor patio footprint, does it, does it encroach on any existing setback requirements for that property?
No, it does not.
Okay, so as long as we're sure that it fits, we're not going to get, we're not going to get in trouble later on if somebody's going to say our setbacks, right?
No, it fits within the setbacks, yes.
Then I had a question regarding, not ours operation, but does, do existing noise ordinances apply to this business?
They do.
And what, so they're open, they'll sell, they'll be selling alcohol till 11:00. That's what I think they're requesting. But at what time do noise--
The noise ordinance.
Ordnances apply? I think they're earlier than that.
Yeah, and it varies on day. I can, there we go. Sorry, so--
Well, I guess, I guess as long as we and they understand that existing noise ordinances will apply to them just like the rest of the city. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
So with the construction, just make sure.
While you're looking that up.
Yeah, here's, okay, this is what I was looking for, sorry. So with use of--
Can you, can you get closer to your mic, Andrew? I'm sorry.
No problem. So amplified outdoor sound music or live entertainment shall be between the hours of 9:00 PM through 7:30 AM Sunday through Thursday and 11:00 PM to 7:30 AM Friday.
Okay, so they could go to till 11:00 o'clock on weekends then? All right.
Correct, yeah. I just wanted to make sure, I want to make sure to give exact stuff because it, like, can vary, like, I wanted to make sure I gave you the exact time, but that's why I pulled it up.
Friday and Saturday. Okay, thank you. One more question, and then this may get answered. I think I know the answer to this, but this is a restaurant available to non-hotel guests as well, or only to hotel guests?
It's open to the public.
Okay. Those, those are the questions I had. Thank you.
I just, I wanted to take a moment. The Mayor was asking about the outdoor seating, and it is, the bulk of it is to the 150th side, but it, is that the south, yeah, that would be the south side. But if you notice, there is outdoor seating along Madeira Way, which personally I think is pretty nice. Just my comment.
So do we. Any other questions from the Commission? There being none then. So the applicant is here, sir. Do you have any, before you make any presentation, do you have any questions of Mr. Morris on his presentation that he's made?
No questions. I guess just a general comment with regards to the inquiries.
You'll have the opportunity. I just want to make sure there's distinction there. So the city has no other witnesses then? Marcy, you're not going to testify about anything else, correct?
Not unless they need to answer any questions.
Okay, all right. So, sir, if you could just tell us who you are and your relationship to the project and make any presentation that you would like to make.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commission members and staff. For the record, Keith Long with Long Law. I am here this evening representing Tiki Docs Madeira LLC, just located, proposing a subject location at 15015 Madeira Way, Suite 100. It's actually at the ground floor of the Cambria Hotel, just for some spatial. So staff did a wonderful job. I want to thank staff again for all their helping getting us this far in the process. They got into the grit of it, so I'll spare you those specific details, but just a general overview, what we are here before you again requesting is your approval of our request to sell for consumption on premise alcoholic beverages, which would be beer, wine, and spirits in conjunction with a proposed full-service restaurant. The restaurant in question is going to be a Don the Beach Comer, which is a tiki-based family-style restaurant concept that we're very excited to bring forth to the community. Again, the criteria as part of this process is boiled down to five. Without getting into it, I think a large part, they can be consolidated into whether they fit the area, whether they have adverse effects on surrounding properties, whether it's commercial nature, the zoning fits. And of course, as staff has indicated, we feel strongly that they do. There, it's a commercial corridor, it's a largely commercial corridor in nature. I think the fact that it is at the ground floor of the Cambria Hotel and a significant portion of the restaurant is incorporated therein, it's a relatively benign use from that concept. There is outdoor seating, sidewalk seating along that one side way, and then the small outdoor patio. And then, again, just to, I guess, address some of the inquiries with regards to the hours and the noise. Certainly, I don't know whether it's necessary, but we would be okay with applying some condition that we would, of course, obliged by any local ordinances or laws or regulations. I think that goes without saying, and that preempts any sort of ruling here. So, yeah, if the ordinance allows for the, or requires that it be shut down on an early hour as far as noise for any outdoor music or anything like that, then certainly we would be more than happy to abide by those rules. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the Commission?
I assume that there's, there will be possibility of live music or even just a lot of music for the outdoor. I guess, I'm going to say it again, the 9:00 on weekdays--
Sure.
--limitation, not on the business, just on the sound.
Of course.
Is, that would be important to us, I think.
No, absolutely. I mean, we'd be required to oblige by those.
I mean, you're not that close to residents, but because you're right next to water, it'll travel to residents that aren't necessarily close.
Absolutely. Yes, sir.
Any other questions?
No, just a comment to follow Commissioner Tagorene if you're, I think it's a great idea. It's a great improvement to the area. It'll be embraced. But if we're, if we can get any complaints, it will be about noise. And I'll just put that up front because any, any commercial, any establishment in that area or anywhere in the city, it's always the noise.
Absolutely. No, we certainly understand that.
Take that to heart.
We need that. Yes, sir. It's not going to be a concern on our front. I think that we intend to assimilate well within the neighborhood and our surrounding neighbors.
I look forward to seeing it.
Thank you.
I just have one question. How close is the set of tables to the water? What is the distance between? Do we know? I can't tell by looking at what we have here. I'm just curious. Are we talking about a potential problem, or it's just not going to happen?
So here's, so here's where the seawall is. There's the dock, and this is where the outdoor seating would be. So, and then there's another structure here. So it would--
How many feet approximately? 100, 150, 200?
Let me zoom in. I can--
Because the Vice Mayor is correct. The complaint we're going to get, it's going to be the noise.
From the rear of the Cambria to just like 20, 20.2 feet, and then it looks like there's about 15 feet from the rear of the property line to the, 18 to the edge of the seawall. And then length of the, so length of the restaurant area looks like, was it 62.2 feet? So there's at least, almost like, there's at least almost 200 feet--
Okay.
From where the restaurant ends and where the water is.
Okay.
Yeah, well, we certainly respect and appreciate the diligence. Again, I want to reiterate that that's not going to be a concern. I can assure you, and to that effect, I think, Mr. City Attorney, the ordinances exist for a reason, and so we'd be happy. But I believe if it gets to a point where there is an issue, I can't speak to your code specifically, but typically in other areas, there's nuisance abatement boards and those sorts of things that provide you the relief if you should, or I believe you probably even reserve the right to revoke this permit that we're requesting here today if it is an issue.
So the answer to the question is, is yes, Mayor. You can revoke this if they fail to meet the requirements of the approval. So if there are no other questions, you have a question? Yes, Commissioner?
Yes, I do. Representing the citizens of Madeira Beach, a couple of questions here. The outside of the restaurant, will it be dog-friendly? That's one. We have a lot of dog lovers in Madeira Beach.
The intent is for our patio to be completely dog-friendly.
Sir, if you could introduce yourself and your relationship to the project.
My name is Yanis Russell. I'm the Director of Construction for 23 Restaurants. I'm the one in charge of building this restaurant for our company, who owns that, that project.
So that's a yes?
Yes. Our intent is absolutely, we have, there's some application, but we intend absolutely to allow dogs.
Fantastic. One more question. Will the business provide a serve-safe program to make sure there is no underage drinking? Will you provide security, or just make sure that your employees are knowledgeable if they go through this class on how to prevent underage drinking?
Absolutely. We have a serve-safe process as part of our training and as part of onboarding for every team member. We operate a number of restaurants in and around the Tampa area, and we have ongoing certifications that are completed quarterly with every staff that serves alcohol to guests.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Okay, if there are no other questions, then, sir, are you complete with your presentation?
I am, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, Mayor, we need to open it up to the public. Have anybody from the public step forward, make any comments. Anyone from the public?
Please come up. We'd love to hear from you.
If you could please state your name. Sir, were you sworn in?
Yes.
Thank you.
I'm Brian Green, and I'm here because I got a letter, and I live very close to the Cambria Hotel. They are-- the Cambria Hotel. They are a great neighbor and, uh, very, very, very good, uh, people. And, and I see no problem with this particular restaurant bar. I, I look forward to it, actually. So I would say as far as, and by the way, I live directly behind the, the parking lot of the Brass Captain. So a little noisy between three and three-thirty. There's your noise thing. But, and I wanted, last thing I'll say is I, I appreciate the, the mayor and, and the rest of you, uh, questioning things and, and taking a concern to, to make sure it's done correctly. Appreciate that. That's it.
Thank you for your kind comments.
Anyone else from the public like to speak? So, mayor, we should close the meeting now. At this point, there would be time for discussion amongst the, the commission, and a motion would be appropriate to discuss. Um, and that motion would normally be made in the affirmative. There'd be a motion to approve the application, a second, and then the discussion.
I, I am, I won't say overwhelmed, but by the residents' comments of, uh, the Cambria being a great neighbor, and I just, I look forward to it, and I think, um, this, this is what we want to, this is what we want to build here in Madeira Beach. It fits, it fits the location. Um, we want these, uh, neighborhood centers, one being Johns Pass Village and one being the Town Center, to, um, to have these types of restaurants. It's going to be someplace that I want to frequent. So, I, I look forward to it. I don't see any reason why, why we would consider voting this down. This is great.
Commissioner Taglerini? Uh, my, my only concern is, is the, is the sound, and it sounds like that we've covered that, and, uh, otherwise, I think I agree with Commissioner Kerr. It's a, it would be a nice addition to our town center.
Commissioner McGinn?
I agree with our, my fellow commissioners on this. Uh, looking forward to being a customer, and, uh, thank you. I think it would be a great asset.
Time for a motion?
Yes, sir. It'd be time for a motion.
Okay.
Do we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion, uh, to approve the special food service establishment for COP SFS alcoholic beverage license application number twenty-two-three dash zero-seven.
Do we have a second? Thank you. City clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carry four to zero.
All right, thank you. All right, next up is, uh, item ten, unfinished business. Do we have anything there, city manager?
No.
City attorney, anybody? All right. We move on from there then, as our, would be contracts and agreements. Item A, Madeira Beach Market Agreement.
And mayor and commission, we discussed this at the workshop as well. Uh, Mr. Hatch is here. This is the agreement. Uh, Mr. Hatch, our recreation director, this is the agreement between the city and the Tampa Bay Markets, Inc., to provide the Wednesday, uh, market on Madeira Way that is scheduled through this year to begin on Wednesday, December the sixth, and continue through just before Memorial Day. Uh, Mr. Hatch?
Nothing really to add to that.
Really, we covered it there.
Perfect.
Uh, just a, a couple of quick changes. We've been, uh, had an agreement with Tampa Bay Markets, uh, in the, we partnering with them in the past. Uh, just a couple of changes are, we are, they will be contributing, uh, fifty dollars per day of the market to cover our cost to close and reopen, uh, Madeira Way. Like there were, and no other real significant changes.
Nope. Any questions?
I think we've gone over this several times. It's a, it's a win-win.
Yep. Is there any public comment on this then?
John Connolly, uh, six hundred Normandy. How about extending the contract to like a five-year, like we've done with the, uh, Kingfish Tournament? Because they are a good, you don't want them to get out of here because they do a nice job, and everybody's happy with them, right? So, see if we could extend the contract.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Jay, is it only a one-year now?
I just shut my comm- I believe the proposed we have is a five-year.
It is. It, okay.
Uh, paragraph sixteen provides, "The term of this agreement shall be a period of five years commencing on the date of approval and ending on the thirty-first day of September twenty-twenty-eight."
Okay, great.
So, and, and the positive thing about that is we, we do have very good rapport with them. So, uh, between myself and then Max on our staff, uh, they're very open to feedback. They always want it to get better. Um, you know, it's, it's a good market as it is, but they want to continue to make it better each time as, as we all do. So, um, we're able to keep that conversation open all the time. But yes, we did, we did want to lock them down. They've had some, some tough roads in other places around here. So, uh, we wanted to make sure we locked them up.
Okay. Other commissioners? Positive to me, uh, do we, is this, is this a voting issue? Do we need to make a motion for it?
Yeah, it'd be a motion to approve.
Do we have a motion? Uh, I move that we move forward with negotiating the proposed contracts with the Tampa Bay Markets, Inc. Do we have a second?
Yes, I second that.
City clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Can I just jump in?
Oh, please.
It's really to approve this contract. I'm not sure why the recommendation is and the staffing that is to move forward with negotiating.
Okay.
It's already been negotiated. This would be to approve. So I'd ask there to be amendment to approve the contract as presented in the agenda package.
Yeah, the, the contract has been, they're, they're good with...
I have, I move that we amend the wording to the contract with, uh, Tampa Bay Markets, Inc., to say we approve it.
I second.
Okay. So I just want to make sure everybody understands. The motion on the table is to approve the contract as it is in the agenda packet. That was, that was a jump in your motion. Okay, thank you.
And we have a second.
I don't want a wordsmith, but...
Just trying to get it done. Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carry four to zero.
All right, thank you. Next item up is eleven, Bravo Clarion Consulting Agreement, FY twenty-twenty-four.
And mayor and commission, we've discussed this, uh, multiple times at multiple meetings. The item before you is to, uh, continue with the process where we have outsourced our finance director slash city treasurer, um, for the city. That began on July of twenty-twenty. Uh, that agreement, we have been approving an agreement annually of, for those services. The agreement expired, excuse me, the agreement for fiscal year twenty-twenty-three expired on September thirtieth. Uh, we, that agreement allows for a continuation, uh, unless terminated by either party for a thirty-day period at a time. Again, we are proposing recommending approval, um, my, uh, approval of continuing with the agreement for fiscal year twenty-twenty-four, um, with Mr. Lafflin serving as the, again, as our finance director and city treasurer. Uh, and again, Mr. Lafflin has been with us since June of, of twenty-twenty. The agreement does provide for an increase of, in the amount the city has been paying for those, uh, services monthly, um, from seventy-four hundred to seventy-eight hundred a month. Again, in your agenda item, that equates, listed, it equates to ninety-three thousand six hundred, um, and again, an increase over the eighty-eight thousand eight hundred from the fiscal twenty-three. Uh, as we've discussed, the recommendation for a part-time, um, if there was a desire to proceed with a full-time, um, finance director, city treasurer, we would be looking at, um, just in a, a much higher salary plus benefits. And at this, you know, frankly, with the size of our city, not something that, that we have had in the past. Um, like what I've, has been communicated to me with some success and not some success over the years. Uh, but again, it would be at a much higher salary to do that. Mr. Uh, Lafflin has done a very good job. We've had no issues. Um, he's very, uh, well-versed, knowledgeable, and experienced in municipal financial matters. Um, and that is my recommendation to continue to proceed, um, as we have for fiscal year, the current fiscal year for twenty-twenty-four. And Andrew, if you had to add a couple of things?
Yeah, if I could just make a few additional points, if you all don't mind. So point number one, this agreement that's in front of you is, does not obligate you on a long-term basis in any way. So the city can, uh, terminate this agreement, uh, for convenience. You don't need cause with thirty days written notice. So if down the road, within, it's a month from now, six from it, six months from now, three years from now, you decide to go in a different direction, no problem. We'll work out a smooth transition with, give that direction, working conjunct with the city manager, and we'll get someone, uh, a, a different, either individual or firm in place, uh, to replace me, not a prominol. So just don't feel like in this agreement, you're obligated on a long-term basis. So that's point number one. Point number two, I just wanted to comment on, on, from the workshop that we had, uh, recently on this matter, and I thought that the mayor actually brought up a, a very good point in reviewing time sheet detail from one of the finance department members, Patrick Cade. I think his concern is very well justified. So just my response to that is, I would implore you all, especially if you're truly contemplating making a change, to actually reach out and speak to those finance department members, Patrick Cade, Karen Geraldine, and just get their input if you have any concerns with the current arrangement. So if they express any concern with the relationship, with the organizational structure as it currently is within the finance department, please get that feedback. And if you do get any negative feedback, if you, if you get it a sense that they would prefer a full-time individual, or prefer maybe another contractor from another firm, because it's just not working out currently, I'll be the first to tell you, I will help find a replacement candidate. I will help train that replacement candidate and ensure that person, uh, or, or company, or whichever direction you go, is successful in the role on a go-forward basis. You have, you have my word on that. But if you do solicit their feedback, and they do express that they're very content with the current arrangement, I just want to make sure it's well-known that, you know, I have their best interests at heart, and they'll be the ones that are absolutely most impacted by any decision that's made to make a change. So I'd hope you would just in- include their thoughts and reflections in your deliberation process if you're to contemplate a change. Third quick point to make is on, well, regardless of what city staff says, the voters have spoken. Well, I, I have a couple of comments on that. For one, the, the charter amendment was never intended to put out for referendum whether or not, and get public input on whether or not the city should insource or outsource. The whole intention of that was simply to provide clarifying language to the charter, and that was it. And there was, when that was brought forth, that was solely the intention. If you feel that there is an inference, whether it's subtle or obvious, I tend to disagree with that, that the public do, does feel like a full-time person, or some change is needed. I don't agree with that, but let's agree to disagree. I, I would say, can we all at least agree that messaging and context does play a rather pivotal role in collecting public input on any matter, especially this one? So, for example, if you go to any member of the public and say, currently the city has an outsourced finance director with a company that's very well-versed in, in handling finance director matters, uh, we've, I've gotten great feedback from the rest of the city, both within the finance department and the city manager and other city employees as a whole, and it's been a very positive working relationship from the feedback I've collected from within the city. In addition, the finance director has worked very well with me and my other fellow commission members in the budget preparation and adoption process, and I've been very happy with the relationship. Not to mention, it also saves approximately fifty to seventy-five, almost a hundred thousand dollars a year in savings to the city that we can then use to, uh, provide some programs and services that can directly benefit you and other citizenry of the city in Madeira Beach. If that's the messaging to the public, what do you think that response would be? I tend to think, if, first of all, if what I'm saying you feel is true, I tend to think that you would get more positive feedback from the public, like, yes, let's continue this relationship, save the city money, it's working well. So I just wanted to make those, those three points. I've stayed relatively silent throughout this process, and I'll continue to, and I'll, I'll be available if you have any questions. But those are just my reflections on this matter as a whole. I've, I've had a great three-year, three years with the city. I've loved every part of it, loved helping, uh, the operation within finance and, and across the city grow, and I'd love to continue to do so. But I respect any decisions, you know, you all make, and if you feel to the contrary, I will help facilitate a smooth transition the best I can. It's just my finance, my, my finance team, they're my peeps, so I just hope you take their thoughts and reflections into account before really going through any, any major change. Happy to address any questions if you have. Thanks.
Thank you, Andrew. Happy to answer. Any questions, comments?
Thank you, Andrew, for that, if you don't mind. Um, I would think that the, um, city manager meets with the employees in the finance department on a regular basis and would have a, an idea how they feel. I don't know if you wanted to speak to that now.
Sure. Have, have not had any issues or any concerns. They work very well with Andrew. They work very well as a team, provide all the information that I request. Haven't had any cons- concerns with departments. Anytime you have anything relating with software technology, there's a learning period, no matter what that might be, um, whether it's, you know, issuing a permit, or, or tracking, you know, documents, or, or learning how to put a purchase order in a system, or even, you know, something separate from payroll and trying to tie that into your general ledger, it, it's, there's a learning process there, and, and as you have new employees come in and out of organizations, it, it just, that's just part of, of change naturally that happens. But I've been very pleased with the entire department, um, with all of, all of the staff, and Andrew's leadership and guidance, and making sure that ultimately we meet our financial fiduciary responsibilities, which we have, that we provide a balanced budget, that we look, making sure that we're collecting all the revenue we're entitled to, that we ensure that obviously we are paying our bills on time, ensuring that, that again, we are getting the best, you know, making the best purchasing decisions, and, and overall, just being as efficient and effective as we can be. The, the financial part is the most important thing that we do. That is, I think of that every day, um, even when I go to bed at night, I'll think of it when I wake up. But that's just because I spent sixteen years as an auditor, and so that's always on your mind. What, you know, what is happening? What are we spending money on? What are we doing? How, how are we, and we need to look into the future. What does next year, five years, ten years look like? And so I'm very, have been very, very confident in the entire finance department's work and, and with Andrew's leadership.
Um, you, you make a great point about the, um, the referendum that went out to the voters. Um, I don't know how much it was discussed prior to the vote. Um, it was a, it was a cleanup action. Um, I agree. Um, I see everyone nodding, including Mr. Trask. Uh, when he, when he, uh, when he wrote the referendum, it was just that. It was a cleanup action for the city charter. It was not something that was really a request from the voters on which direction we wanted to go. And that's why we were given direction after the vote, um, that we did not have to move in that direction. Now, it's been hard for me, you know, I would imagine for everyone, to try to understand what our responsibility was, um, for the residents, for the city. Um, and that's why I promoted and, and really pushed for a second opinion. Um, we were given information this month that that second opinion's not going to come. This, the attorney general is, is, uh, declined to comment on that. We, we've made, it, they're not going to second-guess our attorney. Um, so with that being said, and, um, there are, there are a few residents that are, and this is a hot-button item. It's, it's one that they can, they can easily say, well, we're not governing based on the, on the will of the residents, but I, I personally don't see it that way. Um, I, uh, I don't want to fix something that's not broken. I don't know that there's any financial or finance, um, items that aren't, aren't being addressed. Could, do I have other questions that I can bring to the finance department? Um, sure. other questions that I can bring to the finance department? Sure, absolutely. I mean, you know, the budget's, budget period's over, but it's going to start again here soon. And, you know, there are some comments that I've made to the city manager that I'd like to maybe see addressed in a different light, but that's something we can work with Andrew on. It's not something that, that, okay, it's fixed, because now we have a dedicated person sitting in an office, we're not, you know, today, we're working remotely. And I'll, I'll just put that, just to put it out, out in an idea, you know, there's, I know we spend months and months and months going over several sections of the budget, but, you know, I, I really, there's a, there's a section, there's, there's money that's allocated year by year, employee, employee costs, and utility costs, and all the costs that we know that are, that are set, and then there's a wish list. And somehow, that wish list, I think, needs to be broken out that way, whether it's a new, new vehicle, or capital improvement, or capital expenditure, or whatever, and I'm, I know I'm getting off base. But there are some improvements that I would like to see during the budget season. You know, and there's other things we can talk about, rainy day fund, what happens if there's another COVID, what do we do about that? You know, there's all kinds of things in the finance department that a finance director needs to address, but I don't see having an employee versus the agreement that we had now, bringing answers to those questions. So I, I'm, I tend to agree with the city manager's and the staff's recommendation to continue with, with the agreement that we currently have, and it does have a 30-day clause. So that's, that's even better than if you have an employee, and you can't cancel necessarily an employee's arrangement without just cause. So I've given my two cents.
Commissioner McGinn?
I also agree with the city manager and our vice mayor. I think Andrew's doing a great job. I haven't received that many emails on this subject, but the ones that I have received are, are positive. I think we should go along with it. Just like Andrew said, we can save money with Andrew, and we can take those funds and divert them into another program. I think that's a great part of the program right there, and also, he has no problem down the road, if we decide not to keep him, he will help us transition into another consultant. So I'm all for Andrew. Thank you.
Commissioner Taglerini?
I have no comments at this time.
Okay. Me either. I have to stand with the voters on this. So, do we have a motion at this time? Or wait, I guess, public comment? Do we have public comment on this? Okay. No public comment. Commissioners, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion that we continue with the Clarion called Consulting Agreement for Fiscal Year 2024.
Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay, thank you. City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
No.
The motion carried three to one.
All right, thank you. Next item up is 11, and we, letter C, purchase of sparkling bin SB2 dual-bin trailer. Boy, that's a mouthful.
Good evening, mayor and commissioners. What I bring before you today was in the fiscal year 24 budget and the capital improvements plan, the purpose of this trailer is to clean the city trash cans. Those are the toters that we've replaced down in Johns Pass Village. We also have them in the, on the beach, and in various different parks. We are getting complaints about those trash cans, that they do smell, and they do, they are pretty gross because they don't have liners. When we originally switched these over, the intent was to save the cost on the trash bags that are very, very expensive. But unfortunately, you know, putting bare trash into a trash can without a liner has a lot of nasty liquids. So this trailer did come in under budget at $69,995. I did provide with you the, a few other quotes. There are a couple of used options, but we do not want to purchase used. We do not know what the maintenance of that was. But this could also prove other purposes as well. It is a mobile pressure washer, that it has heat, because it's included on, on the trailer. It's a whole setup. So there is a clean water, and then there's a dirty water, so it keeps everything contained inside the trailer. And then it also has the pressure washer located on the trailer. I should have included a picture, but I'm sorry, I did not. Down the road, we could also look at the options of adding in a fee for the residents to be able to clean their trash cans as a monthly service, or however we choose. It's actually a pretty popular business that's around. The city of Miami uses these sparkling bin cleaners, and has for quite some time. They are built in Florida, which is kind of important with our salt air and tolerance. If we buy anything from up north, typically it doesn't stand up to our elements the way that we hope that they do. But with that, my recommendation is to approve the purchase of the sparkling bin cleaner for $69,995. I am here for any questions.
Just, just so I can understand, this, it says mobile, but it stays in one place?
It's a trailer.
And you'll take, oh, okay. So you'll take the bins to it and clean the bins?
We will hook the trailer onto a truck, pull the trailer to the location, Johns Pass Village will use that. We will then pull the toters to the bin cleaner, and it's an automated system, so it, it's a dual. It picks the cleaners, the toters up, and sanitizes the inside, and then you can pressure wash and clean the outside.
Okay, so it's not for the commercial bins, like the dumpsters, it's not to clean those?
This does have an option to be able to do dumpsters, but only front loaders. We do not have front loaders, we have rear loaders. So.
Okay.
Currently, not, not the dumpsters, no, just the trash can toters.
But we have another method for cleaning the dumpsters already, right?
We sanitize the dumpsters. We don't clean the dumpsters. That's on the individual properties to clean their dumpster. We do spray them with deodorizer every time we empty them.
And you're suggesting that it could be set up for residents if they wanted to take theirs, their private bin over there?
Future-wise, yes, we could plan for that in the fee schedule. We would have to add a fee option for that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Question.
Sure.
We changed from the old cans to the new. Did we create our own problem here?
No, sir. We've actually increased the volume of the trash down in Johns Pass Village. So before, we had these 96-gallon containers. We did not have lids on those trash cans. So there was that, you know, the, the birds taking the trash. We had 32-gallon containers that were sitting inside of a ring, is what we called it. So we had a different set of issues with those containers.
But they had liners in those, didn't they?
They did, but they were much smaller capacity, so they were overflowing constantly. And then also, the trash would get stuck in between the trash can and the liner, which was disgusting, and also raps.
It was much dirtier in the village.
Oh, absolutely.
And it also caused a lot of issues and cleanliness on the pavers. So I, I have the pavers pressure washed quarterly, but with having those old trash cans and the liners, they broke all the time, so it was happening more often.
And how much are the liners for these rectangular toters that we have now? Are they?
They are very expensive.
Okay.
They're, I think they're 25 liners for about $50. And we empty those trash cans every day.
Okay.
So with this, these trash cans would go, depending on, you know, how busy the village is, and the beach, probably a weekly cleaning.
Okay.
So it would just make, it would make it a lot cleaner.
Do you have the staffing to do this? We're not going to come back later and say we need?
I don't need staffing.
This actually saves staffing. If you could explain how it, because previously, or if we had liners in the actual cans, you'd have to physically remove the liner.
Correct, and that, that would take hours in the morning.
That would take much longer than this process.
Yeah.
Not to mention, we currently do not have the leaching, as Megan stated, of liquid and trash being on the pavement or on the street. You could have on the street if a bin is completely full of liquid. However, we're not going to have a bag break.
No.
Because there aren't any bags.
Correct. And this also, the way that we're currently doing it, it takes two, sometimes three people, to pull the trash cans, put them on a trailer, go take the trailer back to the yard, wherever the new trash cans are, drop the trailer, put, take the old cans off, put new cans on, and then go back. So we're talking to swap out all the trash cans in the village, which is about 100 trash cans. It takes a few hours.
What do you do with the contaminated water that you've, that becomes contaminated from cleaning the?
The dirty water.
Yeah.
It goes into the sewer.
Okay, you can just put it into the sewer?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
There's also, I'm not, I'd have to look, but there are, some of these have a system where it totally cleans the water, but that's a little bit more expensive.
And then where are we going to store this? Can it stay inside out of the weather somewhere? Are you going to have a cover for it, or?
I can definitely get a cover for it, but currently, I mean, it'll be over at our public works yard.
Yeah, I mean, we're worried about longevity out here in the salt air.
That's why we're trying to build a public works building.
So I wanted, just to cover the, again, I think Megan went over briefly the current process, which is labor-intensive, not to mention time-intensive, of bringing in clean cans, and removing the dirt, the ones that have been out there. That will no longer happen. We'll replace the cans as they begin to deteriorate, obviously, but a little bit more efficient process. Yes, it comes with the initial capital cost, and of course, maintenance over the years. But just so you're aware, and it's not listed, and I apologize because I missed this when it went through, the funding for this is coming out of the parking fund. It's not a general fund expenditure. So our visitors and people that pay to park at the village, at Archibald, et cetera, that is where the funding for this purchase is coming from.
Hello, Megan, how are you doing?
I'm well, how are you?
Good, thanks. I agree with you about the containers, and when we have events going on in Johns Pass, it, the trash cans are terrible. They smell, obviously. It's no one's fault.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I think that it would be in our best favor to purchase this trailer to really clean the trash cans before we hold events, you know, or right after the event's over. Is there a warranty with this trailer that?
There is. I believe it's a year.
One year?
And they are, like I said, based in Florida, so there's.
I thought they were based in Utah.
No, this one, sparkling bins is in, is in Florida.
Oh, it is, okay. So there's no, we don't have to pay a transportation fee or anything like that?
No.
What about the wrapping for the trailer? Is that $1,000?
It says on here that it's $1,000. I haven't really negotiated that price, just because I wanted to bring it to you all before I really got into that. But we do have a local company here that does do wrapping, that I've gotten grants for the garbage trucks, and also our trailers that you've seen. So that's always an option as well.
Okay, that's all I have. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other commissioners? Okay.
I was initially following the mayor's question, did we cause a, cause an issue? I have not been in favor of those toters down in Johns Pass. Yeah, that, my experience is that they're typically pretty nasty, and you don't want to touch them to actually lift the lid to put trash in. And a solution that you didn't have to lift the lid seemed the way to go. Listening to your, your feedback, though, and I'm, you know, I'm second guessing that, but still, if there's no other option, and, and we definitely are going to keep the toters down there versus something that has an, an open, so you don't have to touch the trash can to put your trash in it, then I would support this. It sounds like the birds are an issue. The leaching, I didn't realize was a, was an issue. And if that's, you know, if these are, if these toters are solving other issues, then, you know, you have my support, so.
Thank you. I would like to say that we did cut holes in the tops of the trash cans, to make it to where you could put just the trash inside versus lifting the lid.
How's that working out?
Great. I haven't had, I haven't had any complaints.
For odors, no.
And we've, we, I think we did that probably two months ago-ish. So this will help to, you know, now that obviously opens up the trash can a little bit more, but honestly, it's really cut down on the complaints. We do understand that, you know, swapping them out, not having liners. But that, as opposed to a couple other, you know, overflowing trash cans and trash ending up everywhere in the village, which was happening on a daily basis. So these containers are three times the size of what was down there, and we have the same amount of trash cans that we had, but now we have a much larger volume. So the village is busy, and there's a lot of garbage. And these trash cans also look a lot nicer.
It's a great problem to have. Now, does the bin trailer, does it actually pick up the?
So you see up there, Robin has it on the screen, you see the, the orange part?
Yeah, so that's, that's just like on the back of the?
Correct, yep, it just picks it up and lifts it.
Picks it up, so that when it, there's, you squirt them out, or I guess it's a pressure washer?
Yes.
And so all the water?
Goes directly into that back part of that bin.
Right.
I should have, I should have played a video for you.
So the employee's not actually picking up any liquid, or?
Everything stays contained in the back of that trailer.
And then, when do you power wash the outside? When it's, when it's lifted?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, there's actually a few YouTube videos, I mean, these, these things are pretty popular. This is a new kind of venture that a lot of people are doing. I didn't realize it was so popular.
Have you gotten feedback from others that have used?
I've talked to Miami, and they love them. I think they have, they have a fleet of three or four.
Good. Okay, well, I know you do your homework, so.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay, do, do we have a motion?
Sure. I'll make a motion that we approve the purchase of the sparkling bin SB2 dual-bin trailer.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Okay, next up, item D, purchase of 2023 Ford F-150 Supercab XL 4x2.
Hello again. What I bring before you again is another capital item that was approved in the budget. This will be coming out of the Archibald Fund. We expanded that because we took over the maintenance of all of the parks, except for this facility. So with that, now I have two employees that are ground maintenance workers, with only having one truck that was in that department. So this is to have that employee have their own truck.
And this is not going to go out on the beach at all? It doesn't need to be 4x4?
No, sir.
Okay.
We have, we have quite a few. With this truck, it is, it's available in December. Buying and building out a truck, I'm not sure if anybody's aware, but it's about a six-month process. So I, I'm okay with it being a 4x2. I have, I think most of my fleet is 4x4, so.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this? Okay, commissioners?
You have to have good tools to do a good job.
Yes.
Amen.
I have no comment. Do we have a motion, then?
I move that we approve the 2023, purchase of a 2023 Ford F-150 from DeValford for $40,218.
Do we have a second?
I second that.
Thank you. City clerk, we call the roll, please.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Mayor Rostak?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
All right, thank you. Next up, item 12, new business appointment, civil service commission.
Yes, sir. The civil service consists of five members. Two vacancies exist due to expiring terms of members. The vacancies have been advertised, and one application was received. Judith Ann McLaughlin applied for reappointment, and was in. was received. Judith Ann McLaughlin applied for reappointment and was invited to attend the VOC regular meeting, but she was not able to come tonight. And she's the only one who applied, but I'll continue advertising until the second vacancy is filled. And the new term will, if she's appointed, the new term will expire October 30, 2026, because there are three-year terms.
Okay. Is there any public comment on this? All right, any commissioner comments?
I've heard good reports from the current civil service board commission about Judith Ann. I see no reason to, to not reaffirm her application.
Vice Mayor?
Try to watch the civil service commission meetings when I can, and it seems like it's a good team. Need to get, keep good team together.
Mm-hmm.
I agree with that. Good team is a good investment for our city.
Okay, with that said, do we have a motion?
You still, yeah, motion?
Motion.
May I do it?
Yeah, go ahead.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to accept Judith Ann McLaughlin's application for reappointment to the civil service commission.
I'll second.
Thank you. City clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Rostek?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Thank you. Next item up, 12, Bravo, Resolution 2023-12 FY 2023 Budget Amendment Number Three.
Mayor, I'll go ahead and read that resolution by title only.
Thank you.
Resolution 2023-12, a resolution of the Board of Commissioners of the City of Madera Beach, Florida, amending the budget for fiscal year 2023, October 1, 2022 through September 30, 2023, by increasing appropriations for expenditures in the general fund, the sanitation fund, and the parking fund, and providing for an effective date. That was a reading of Resolution 2023-12 by title only. I'm sure Mr. Laughlin will have some background on that.
So just to give you a quick overview on this amendment, Florida statutes allow for municipalities to amend their budget up to 60 days after year end. So this is the last amendment we can do, and this is typically that cleanup amendment that we do at the end of the fiscal year, when reviewing all of the actual expenditures, not only by fund but by department. And so the way Section 10-4 to Section 10-5 of the city's charter states that we need a balanced budget and that actual expenditures, actual outflows cannot exceed budget by not only fund but also within departments. So we budget at the department level, which includes both personnel operating and capital expenditures. So we're viewing that throughout the year. We make budget amendments throughout the year. If there's unplanned items, bringing that to y'all, to your attention. In review of, you know, taking our snapshot through the entire fiscal year 2023, very positive results overall. So in, in total, our revenues, our actual revenues were very much in line with budget. Our total citywide actual expenditures were far less than budget. So actual expenditures, 21.8 million. Our amended budget was 41 million. On the revenue side, amended budget was 28.5 million, actual was 25.5 million. So actual inflows exceeded actual outflows. The, the amendments that we have here for you today, very few. The main one is just we have, in our budget, we have an allocated budgeted contingency that we just reallocate amongst departments, for those departments that are coming closer to hitting their total allowable budget expenditures. And then a couple others, just on, probably the other biggest one is in the parking fund. That's just due to those service fee charges from the, from transaction processing fees, due to revenues being so high in the, in the parking fund, that you also have that offsetting expense on those transaction processing fees. And we already made one amendment during the year to increase that. It needs to be increased even more due to the volume that we encountered in FY 2023. And then just another small amendment in the city manager's department within the general fund for our state public affairs consulting services, higher than initially budgeted. And then the sanitation fund, staff overtime and temporary labor services, and then some specific operating supplies for department staff, just higher than initially budgeted. But other than that, everything remained within budget, not only at the fund level but also the department level. And then after making these, this, approving this resolution, will remain in compliance both with state law and with our charter in terms of, but, both budget adoption and budget compliance. So if you have any questions on any aspect of the resolution, I'll gladly take them. But overall, it paints a pretty positive financial picture in terms of actual revenues compared to budget and actual expenses compared to budget on a citywide basis.
Mayor, I had, I had to have Mr. Gomez explain this to me in detail, so I, I, I understand it's adjusting line items, amounts, so that we, our expenditures match our, our income in the right areas.
Correct.
Basically.
Vice Mayor?
I really don't have any comment. It's just pretty much accounting related. It's, we're not making decisions to change anything or to approve anything other than an accounting procedure.
Commissioner McGinn? Yep, this is, this is a compliance matter, and sure we remain in compliance with our budget authority for the fiscal year, September 30, 2023.
Commissioner McGinn?
I have no comment at this time.
Is there any public comment? Okay. Do we have a motion to accept this?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to approve Resolution 2023-12, proposed fiscal year 2023 budget amendment number three.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, thank you. City clerk, will you call the roll, please?
Vice Mayor Kerr?
Yes.
Commissioner Taglerini?
Yes.
Commissioner McGinn?
Yes.
Mayor Rostek?
Yes.
The motion carried four to zero.
Thank you kindly. Next item up, staff reports. Do we have any?
No.
Okay. All right, agenda setting for the next meeting?
Do we have, as, on the list there in front of you, the Madera Beach Babe Ruth Agreement for Little League Baseball primarily, RFP for electrical repair services. We're hoping to get a representative from Duke Energy to discuss the status of the undergrounding on Gulf Boulevard. We'll have the discussion on garbage truck replacement as part of our CIP fund and public insanitation. We're going to have our, the results of RFQ for our information technology and the recommended firm. First budget amendment for fiscal year 24, for the current fiscal year's budget. Presentation on the Johns Pass Village Activity Center, alternative compromise. And items H and I, we, we're not going to have item H, that'll be in December. It's an overall discussion regarding the master plan and issuing an RFQ for a firm to assist with that. But, so, other discussions that I had individually with a couple of you, and that's kind of what led to this. But I will have a presentation on December 13 regarding a little bit about what compromises, what constitutes the city's economy and our tourism base, et cetera, a little bit of the history. But it'll be brief, but it'll be, eventually this item will be just part of the, again, the city's master plan. And I do hope to have our monthly, the city manager's monthly report next week. And anything else that any of you would like to add?
Okay. All right, next up is reports.
Oh, oh, oh.
Go ahead, I'm sorry, sir.
It looks like we have a pretty full agenda, but I, I wanted to add two items. On a regular basis, we bring up items, and they may not be resolved. And I'd like to, I'd like to, I've talked to the city manager about this, creating a list, what I'm going to call old business, that is still open. I have a, I have a preliminary list that I put together, but just by looking back at agenda items, I don't want, I don't want things to get lost just because we haven't put them on a recent agenda. I'll, I'll make a reference to one, you know, the, something that before I ever was on the planning commission, which was instrumental of me going on to the planning commission and then ultimately on the VOC, was the, the no-wake zone. I get constantly asked that question, and I never, I can't give an answer. I'm not saying that these things need to be discussed every week, every meeting or every month, or, but just to have a list, maybe it's presented quarterly, that can be brought up as a reminder of, of items that are still old business but still open, if they haven't been resolved. And so I'd like to just talk about that and how we could instrument, make it, I don't want to create another project for someone, but I, I think it's important. And on that list, my second item is, whatever happened to our discussion on residential impact fees? We had Jerry Murphy here, and when that was going through the planning, impact fees were going through the planning commission, I happened to be on the planning commission at that time. And I was told after, I brought it up many times, that I don't believe that if single-family homes, if someone mitigates it, raises their home for flood purposes, that they should be hit with an impact fee because their new home has more square footage than their old home. And I just, and I don't want to go down that road too far, but for stairs or laundry or whatever, you're going to put, you're going to put a million dollars into a home, you're going to want to make it nice. But you're not making an impact to the community, and I don't think you should be charged for that. So I was told you can't break out residential from commercial. I was told that over and over and over again. But then after it already passed, well, it came out that it, we couldn't break it out if, the way they were doing it, but they could do it a different way. And it took that research. So anyway, I don't want to go, I don't want to have the meeting about it now, but I want, I want to find out where we are on that, those residential impact fees.
I would like to see it put under unfinished business, because that's what it is.
That, that would be fine, as long as we talk about it at the, at the workshop.
And you're exactly right, every, it goes by the wayside. We forgot to get about it until, you know, we get the light bulb go off, and it's like, oh my God, we forgot about this from three months ago. You're 100% correct.
That's all I have.
Well, thank you. Commissioner McGinn?
One thing the residents bring up to me quite often is on the horseshoe between 144th and 145th, what's the timeline for fixing the roads through there? That's something I can't honestly really tell them. I say it's in, we are working on it, but the humongous cracks, you know, down the street, I would like to give them some sort of a timeline, like, is it 2014 or 2015? When can they expect some sort of?
Is that in the budget?
That was in?
144th, 145th.
Well, yeah, we'll, we'll put it on and just bring you an update as to where it is.
Okay, that'd be fantastic. Other than that, I'm good.
Okay. City attorney, you have anything for us?
No, Mayor, I don't have anything tonight, thank you.
All right, thank you. City manager?
Just a quick, this, starting tomorrow and going through Saturday is the 30th anniversary of the King of the Beach Fishing Tournament Festival. So that begins tomorrow evening, 5:00 PM. Thursday's what is termed as the captain's meeting, and we'll have fireworks Friday evening, Friday night, 9:00 PM, and fireworks on Saturday night as well, beginning at 9:00 PM. So encourage everyone to come out and visit the vendors, eat some of the food, and watch the fireworks Friday and Saturday. And if interested, Saturday is the, the weigh-in of the fish and the different categories, of which I am not overly well-versed in. But hopefully, Mr. Crabtree, our wonderful Marina manager, will further enlighten me as he does at every one of these. But we do encourage everybody to come out.
Thank you. City clerk, you have anything for us?
I'm just working on the qualifying. Pack it, and I'm almost done with it.
Okay, well, thank you. All right, if there's no, anything further, the time is 7:45 hours, we will adjourn the meeting.